6:01, I'll call the meeting to order if you'll please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. I'm Bruce Hunt. I am the pastor of Grace Church on Pelham Road. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, today is the day that you have made. We choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we, as we think of the warmer weather, we think of our festivals and the people that will be converging on our city in this, in the summer months. We pray for the planning, we pray for the safety. And Lord, we lift up our police department, our fire department, and our city workers. We just pray your blessing on their families, keep them safe. We thank you for our city council, and we ask your wisdom imparted to them. We just thank you and we ask a blessing on their families, and we just thank you for this time. It's in Jesus's name. Amen.
Mike, if you'll please take the roll call.
All right, Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Pro Tem Nick.
Here.
Treasurer S. Timer.
Present.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
By Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of February 20th.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Marcos?
Valerius.
Valerius.
I'll second them.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We will now have a presentation by our fire chief, Mr. O'Reilly.
Good evening and thank you for having me. Tonight, I would like to announce that the Allen Park Fire Department was invited, along with the mayor, to the city of Southgate for an awards night. On October 3rd, or excuse me, yes, on October 3rd, 2023, the city of Southgate had the largest fire that they've had in history. That was the senior apartments on Allen Road in Pennsylvania. That building had 100, 117 units and contained 129 residents. Eight different departments responded for mutual aid to extinguish that fire and perform rescues of the residents. Fifty-seven responders were the total number of responders that showed up from the eight different departments. There were no deaths and no major injuries for the residents. The first responders did have a few mild to severe injuries, but everyone has made a full recovery. So in recognition, or recognition of our mutual aid pack and the services that the Allen Park Fire Department provided, the city of Southgate gave us an award for our mutual aid. And then we had State Representative Jamie Churches, State Representative Tulio Liberati, and State Senator Darren Camillari gave us a recognition letter as well. The firefighters that responded, we invited to come tonight so they could be recognized for their brave actions. A couple of them couldn't make it because of the short notice, but the individuals who responded to the fire were Lieutenant Michael Shook, Sergeant Derek Spencer, if you'd like to come up, Engineer Michael Estrada, Engineer Ryan Croft, firefighter Chris Aglone, firefighter Tom Malcolm, firefighter Michael Franz, firefighter Trent Olson, and firefighter Lynn. Because of the brave action that these men provided to the city of Southgate, everyone was safe. Thank you.
It was a wonderful tribute played, paid to all of the responders by Mayor Caspa. And it was very moving to watch the videos that were played prior to all of the awards being given. Great testament to the mutual aid that goes on, and very proud of all of the first responders and particularly our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He did mention that all the residents got out safely. It was, again, seeing the videos was, you had people in wheelchairs, on oxygen, et cetera. One of the most severe injuries was to a responding policewoman who had to, had so much smoke insulation, inhalation, she had to be intubated. And you get kind of concerned when you hear that because you know those ones are not going to fully recover, so. But they do what all first responders do, and they go in and disregard the danger to themselves, so. It was a very moving night.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, one of my, I do special events at the museum, Henry Ford Museum, and one of my staff was actually at that house. And she commented to me, what a wonderful job Allen Park did. So I just want it to be put out there, and I just really appreciate that everybody was okay. So, thank you.
Well, now we'll get on to some organizational business, the first one being the recommendation to appoint Jacqueline Jackie Lazardsky to the Historical Commission, which has a vacancy. She will be filling an unexpired term, and her term would end December 31st, 2025. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Appointment is confirmed, and I believe she is here and can be sworn in.
Just have you stand there and raise your right hand, and at the end say, "I do," "I swear," or "I affirm," whatever you feel most comfortable with. I'm not going to make you repeat after me. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of historical commissioner to the best of your abilities? So help you God.
I do.
All right, congratulations. This is yours. You just sign it and keep.
Thank you very much. Second order of business is the appointment to the Retiree Board of Trustees as Ellen Tem, of Ellen Templin. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick. Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. I assume that she will be sworn in at her convenience. Now we have our operational report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Council. Resident Allen Park, I apologize to the students. You missed the meeting three weeks ago that was like 15 minutes long or less.
I told them.
Six.
That was the one you wanted to be at.
Less than 15.
Way less than 15. Sorry. Just like, congratulations to DPW, Deputy DPS Director Bill Minor and his retirement. His official last day will be March 7th, March 27th, but his last workday was actually last Friday, March 1st. We could go Friday, March 1st. We wish him well in his new endeavors. And he's going to be definitely missed over at the DPS. Want to also mention the Parks and Recreation Department, they are working with the high school tennis team to host some of their matches at the GoHona Community Park tennis courts that were recently refurbished with the help of the DDA and the Parks and Recreation. So just another joint venture, working together with the school district as we move forth. And that leads into another item here. With the ice arena, hosted the, one of the four MHSAA Division II Hockey Tournament quarterfinal games on Saturday, March 2nd. The game was between University of Detroit Jesuit and Trenton, and the match was watched by close to 1,500 people in the stands there. Kyle and Robert working with the APHS Athletic Director Jimmy Victor to see if they can host a future events, and it looks promising for that. So I think everybody was very impressed with the facility. It looks great. You've been in there. It's well lit. The bleachers are ADA compliant, and I think it'll definitely be one of those that they're going to have on their, on their list for future games. Police Officer Katie Rogers will be attending the Women in Command, excelling as Female Leaders Training, which is going to be hosted by the Michigan State Police on April 10th and 11th in Ocamos. We have a budget work session to review the proposed budget for fiscal year '25 that's scheduled for Tuesday, May 7th at 6 o'clock. And congratulations to fellow, following employee that's reached a milestone of years of service with the city, and that's going to be David Harding. He's our DPS mechanic. He has five years on March 18th. I also submitted between the last council meeting and tonight, the CDBG Community Development Block Grant applications. Senior Public Services for $20,000. We put a submission in for Kennedy Park to add a walking path to the current quarter-mile walking path and then make it a half-mile total, and an exercise station. Total cost in that was $490,063. We, so, did an application for AEDs. These are the Automated External Defibrillators. You've seen these in, in use on, they'll be at the mall, they're at the community center now. But I think it came in handy with the life-saving of the football player that was on the Monday Night Football game a couple of years ago. From the Buffalo Bills, I cannot think of his name right now, against Cincinnati. And that really raised the attention of the need for the defibrillators and for people to learn CPR. So we added, although these facilities already have some AEDs, we're just adding more if this grant's funded for the community center, the fitness center, gym, the ice arena, the library, the DPS, the basin, here at City Hall, the police department, Palooche Senior Apartments, police patrol, road vehicles, and also some fire vehicles that do not have them. Just so we can be as safe as possible in helping the residents in need. That grant would be $104,000. We also included a application for Rourke Family Park for ADA improvements at $293,000. Gingham Dog Park, I had to add Tatlot to that one. I did not want to think, have the Wayne County thinking that we were applying for a dog park with block grant funds. So it's Gingham Dog, which is a character, I believe, out of a Disney, was that a Disney character? It was a book. It was a book, out of a book. So Dingam, Gingham Dog Park Tatlot ADA improvement, just short of $400,000. And then the final one I put in was kind of something a little unusual. Wayne County is desperately in need to make sure they spend their money through, that they get from HUD in a timely fashion. And as I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, we're here to help you, help us, help you. And so we put in for ADA curb ramp replacements, modernization over in the Kennedy Sub, which is a qualified area. And the way I wrote it is that they fund, could fund one intersection with ADA ramps or they could fund 10 intersections with ADA ramps. Once we have the first one, and I think it's $104,000, each additional one would be approximately $75,000 after that. So if the, if the county came and said, hey, we have $180,000, great, I've got two intersections that can be done. If they have $250,000, great, I have three intersections that can be done. So we can kind of fit that to meet what their, what our needs are, also meeting their needs to spend the money in a timely fashion. Last conversation with them is that they had somewhere in the range of $6 million that they were trying to spend down by May 2nd. I don't see that happening, so that's why I feel this was a good application to put in to see if we can maybe help them spend that money. Absolutely. And then, real quick, I'm testing out the, tonight, I guess the philosophy was if I could handle the computerization screen up here, maybe it's something we'll look at for everybody else up here. Primarily, though, it's really coming in handy for the Planning Commission, as they get a lot of drawings and they can zoom in and blow up a little bit better. So we'll just test that out to see where we're at, and we'll go from that further.
May I have a motion to accept and file the administrative report?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. You now come to public comments. You are limited to four minutes. We would like your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address, and keep your comments still.
Roger Lelentoff on Cove Street. Came here before about the parking on Cove. Give them an inch, they take a while. Now they're blocking driveways. I've had to drive over the curb to get my, get in my driveway, that bitches. I went to the high school, went to the police department two times, spoke to four officers, nothing ever happened. And when I went to the high school, they said parking was not a problem. I looked out the window, and I said, you gotta be kidding me. Take a look. You got parked, your cars parked in between the school buses in the restricted zone at certain times. They don't even look out the window. Fire hydrants. Fire hydrants. Your truck on another day, guys, a repeat offender. Last garbage day. Blocking my driveway. Blocking my driveway. Now I have to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning to park two cars outside my house so I can get into the driveway. That shouldn't have to happen. And we were just here with the firefighters. All the firefighters are going to fight a fire if they can't get to the fire hydrant. That should be a no-brainer. And please, I've heard this before. The police do have manpower, because my neighbors have got tickets, and I talked to another neighbor a week ago, and he, his family got tickets too. So there is manpower for the police and the ordinance to give out tickets. And just one thing I'd like to say is, we pay city taxes. The high school, the high school kids don't.
If you would please leave those pictures with Mr. Mizzi. I still have your material on my desk.
They're just lucky that the garbage trucks come early during the day. Name's on the board.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Mary Jane Kittel, Hanford Street. I just want to make the city aware that the city ordinance is missing 24 sections on the, online, along with one is scanned in upside down. I did leave a note for Mr. Mizzi. I'm waiting to hear back on him on where those 24 are at. Also, when I went to submit a letter to request to get on the agenda with the city, because I've never had this happen to me before in any other city I've gone to, I've always had to submit a letter to the city clerk. The city clerk is one that looks at it. If it's not to him, he normally submits it to the person it is to. Instead of Mr. Mizzi taking my letter, he kept sliding it back to me with no words. Finally, I said, I'd like to have it timestamped, and he refused to do, well, he gave it to, he refused to do it and gave it back to me. And after reading it, said it had to go to the mayor and told me where to go. I told him that, that I didn't believe that it was, I told him that the subject on there, I believe, was against the law for him to turn it back and to push me away. As I was walking away, he violently exploded and started screaming, so much to the fact that everyone in the city heard him screaming, that when I was in administrator's office for the mayor to turn in this note, two women, one for the HR, one for the payroll, came in to check out to see who I was. I don't appreciate that treatment, and I don't believe that. That is very ethical of him. Second, I did turn this into the city, and I was handed it to your secretary or administrative assistant on March 1st, and I never heard a reply from you at all. If you did not want to put me on the agenda, that is up to you. I could go to a city council member and ask them to do it, but you should have at least replied to me. I'm just wondering how ethical this city is turning into. Also, I asked for FOIA. I asked for it two times. I don't believe the information I asked for is correct. I would like to speak to somebody about it, because I really don't want to file a FOIA complaint with the state. But my understanding is that the city administrator, not administrator, city clerk is the one who's supposed to reply. And Mr. Jim Gross, whoever he is, is the one who replied, and I don't quite think he understood everything I was asking for. So I'd like to speak to at least the city clerk on this, whenever he has time. Lastly, I know that on the agenda I wanted to be was for residency. I know that the state has a residency law that is PA 212 of 1999. I have the fact chief and a municipal municipal lead that states it, but on the back is an example that uses City of Gibraltar. In section 4.1 city, at City of Gibraltar, it says, "The full-time personnel other than elected and appointed officers shall be deemed a city employees," which is saying that those people are not city employees. They are not covered underneath the city residency law. I don't expect anybody to address me. I do not appreciate the attorney coming to me after meetings. I'd appreciate it if he doesn't come after this meeting. I know that he feels I don't know what I'm talking about. I've heard rumors. He said, don't listen to me. There's nothing to worry about. She's just full of hot air. So I filed a report with the state. State has it as of March 1st. They're working on it. And I'm planning on filing out a report with another government entity that's even over the state. I just want to make you aware of it. Thank you very much.
Brenda Dingus, Horga Street. I have two questions. One is, Mr. Kibbe, you were talking about the defibrillators, and I would like a little bit more clarification on that. What exactly they were for? I heard you say a whole bunch of things that they were for and the amount they were for, but I wasn't clear exactly what you were talking about. And number two is, what's going on with the theater and the grant with the theater?
The defibrillator. Look at the chief to make sure I'm in the right realm here.
Okay.
Defibrillator is when somebody's in a cardiac arrest, you can take this machine off, plug it, you know, it plugs in, and you can shock the person to bring him back to, to get a act of like potential, right?
No, I understand what a defibrillator is, but you, you named a number of things, you number, like a number of places that it was going to be or whatever. That's what I was specifically asking about.
Yeah, so, so we, we put in for 38 defibrillators total.
Okay.
They would be located, out of those 38, seven would be at the community center, fitness center, ice arena, gym. So seven in that building alone.
Okay.
Public library would be two. DPS would be four. That's the, the facility over and out of drive. The basin is down off of Goddard and Moran, and there's a couple of people down there. Three here at City Hall, four for the police department. I know when I talked to the chief, possibly one in the jail cells and stuff like that that they would need them at. Palooche Senior Apartments over on Champagne, eight total. Police road patrol vehicles, I put down for six, and police support vehicles, three. And that would be the chief's vehicle, the deputy chief, and I believe you have a pickup truck as well. So a piece of equipment that don't have defibrillators with them, they would be, would have them down.
Okay, so, so.
Depending on the grant being awarded.
So both departments felt that we needed that many for that amount?
I think she's more asking about, she's asking about the CDGB. She's asking about the block grant, like where's the funding for it?
Oh, that funding.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That funding comes from Wayne County through HUD. So Wayne County gets an allocation from HUD on an annual basis, and then they, they, we could, $20,000 set aside for public services automatically, and then we have to apply for the remaining amounts. So those are the Kennedy Park project, the, the Work Family Park, the Gingham Dog Park, and the ADA curb cuts. Those are a competitive application through the county process.
Okay, thank you. And then the theater. What's, what's going on with the grant with the theater?
I have not heard anything back from the county. We submitted that a year ago. We still have not heard anything back from them.
So over a year, you've heard nothing? That's what I'm getting?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have any idea when we're going to hear anything about that?
You're dealing with Wayne County, ma'am. I can't answer for Wayne County.
I, and I understand that, and I'm not accusing you that you don't know what's going on with Wayne County. So I ran Palooche for a while, so I was the president over there. So I know how Wayne County does. But I, trust me, I know, and I know how they play with their money over there. But do we have, have we had anything currently responded in like even the last six months of what's going on with that?
No, and I can tell you this, I emailed not only our two commissioners that represent Allen Park, but I also sent a letter to Warren Evans and his deputy.
Okay, then I will take it as that. Thank you.
Jose Escival, CICAT. Mayor, we have an uncommon problem right now with the driver on CICAT. From Dix to Allen Road, and Allen Road to Dix, both ways, all the way around the clock. They zoom down our street every day, all around the clock. And recently, my neighbor's car was, was involved with hit and run. The driver hit his car, and he left without stopping. And I, last year I had a speed trailer down there, and it's still there anyways, and still do it. What, why can't we put down speed bumps on, on the street?
Well, this is not a Q and A, but we have met with our, with our police department and our DPS, and speed bumps are not the answer. They cause more issues than they will solve. Not to mention the havoc they would wreak with our equipment, but we've done, we have studied that, and they are not the end-all and be-all. If you would please fill out the form there with your name and contact number, and leave it with the clerk, please. We will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Charles Blown Champagne. One thing with the speed bumps is if you have speed bumps on the roads, when it comes to snow and plowing, I think that is a fact with that, because I know Detroit, some streets have speed bumps with that. I was going to ask as well about the lovely Dollar Show, because it's been 11 months since we got that grant, or not got it, but applied for it. And also, if you go to our city Allen Park Facebook page, on the top of it is pinned about that grant projects. But it's interesting, still haven't heard anything after 11 months with Wayne County. The fire station. The resolution. First off, I would suggest, once it approved, make sure you get pictures of the design so we don't have past history of things from other buildings that we did. I know our past councilwoman Pam Sykes, she wanted for the DPS, wanted equal locker rooms for both men and women. Always, the difference between the DPS building and a fire station is, fires station, they work there and they live there with 24/7 on call and stuff, so. So you think of that before approving things. I know in the past, when I was on council, I emailed the, sorry, the Canadian Railroad Station about Southfield, right by Roosevelt, that bridge, it's crumbling. It's still crumbling. And we need, we should get, try to get some type of grant or something, or they need to come fix it, because I would be, I would just fear of one day that bridge just crumbles down with a train during traffic or something. But if you really look at it, it's getting worse. And I'm only saying this because residents come up to me when I'm go to the Glass Onion or supporting our local businesses. Please look into that. Good job to our competitive cheer team, Winning States. I hope, again, we can do a proclamation for them. Whether you're on a, a commission or not, there's, as on your agenda, there's plenty of events happening in the future. Please volunteer, even when you're on this council, volunteer, help the Please volunteer, even when you're on this council, volunteer, um, help the facilities, the DDA with these events. Every little bit helps, um, whether it's just for a couple hours or not. So please, um, and then to the residents that's watching this, please go and, and volunteer for these, so that these events can keep moving forward. But, um, I, I would really hope after this meeting that there's another email to Wayne County about that Dollar Show lot, because, and if not, if we don't get it, if we didn't get the grant, let's move on and find either if we're going to go through that plan, figure out a way to get it, or start from scratch again. Thank you.
I live on, uh, Southfield Road. I'd like to make a concern that the, uh, on Southfield Road and on E Course Road, the, uh, the lights don't seem to be timed properly, and it's causing a bit of traffic to build up in the morning time. Uh, not that it's a huge deal, but it seems to be causing congestion in those areas, and they're slowing traffic down. And I'd also like to ask why, or if, to make a suggestion to get, uh, buses in the morning for the high school, especially during the liquor time, because it can seem very difficult for the students who live far away from Allen Park High School to get to school if they don't have a ride there. So, so, yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
There we go. Chris Egan, Police Chief. Uh, both these gentlemen had concerns. Uh, just wanted to, uh, getting a lot of phone calls recently because of coal, Bell Forest area, things like that. Um, I would make two suggestions and then a quick explanation. Part of the problem I think we're having right now is the construction at the high school and the tennis courts and things like that. So a lot of the student parking, they are parking in those neighborhoods. That's number one. I think that's going to be resolved here very shortly. Um, so we probably have been a little more lax than we normally would or should be. The other thing is, um, there's parking signs there to say between eleven and two. So I think we have two options here. I think those were put in back when the high school allowed the students to leave at lunch. That's no longer the case, I don't believe. So that's why those signs went eleven to two, but there is some misconception with the neighbors thinking that that's only for students of the high school. Those signs unfortunately are for everybody, so even if you live there, you can't park there during eleven and two. Um, it's something we can look at to try to remove those signs now. I don't know that they're necessary, um, but I think the residents want them, but they just don't, they want us to, we've been asked to run plates, and if they live there, not write tickets, we can't do that by law. We have to be fair and consistent. Having said that, if someone's parking in front of fire hydrants or blocking driveways, please give us a call. Um, if you don't get the response you want, um, instead of calling dispatch at Wyandotte, which is prompt four, it's the same phone number, three one three, three eight six, seven eight hundred. Prompt four will take you to dispatch. Prompt seven will take you to our officer in charge, um, our lieutenant or sergeant on the desk. We will come ticket, we will come tow. I've been at fires where we, they smashed out both windows and ran the hose through in those hoses. If they leak, your car gets wet. We will move your car. Um, residents should not have to worry about getting in and out of their driveway. Clearly, we want our fire hydrants, um, clear, but, um, please give us a call when you see it. What we're seeing a lot of times is we'll post it on Facebook or take pictures or things like that. Um, if our officers are available, they're going to come over, they're going to address it. If they're not, we'll try and keep it on there. We are trying to make a shift this year from getting off freeways and getting us in the neighborhoods and near the schools and in the neighborhoods and things like that. Every street, including mine, people speed down. Um, if it's continual problem, call us. Summer's coming, so we will get our speed trailers out. Um, but it is our goal to try and work with everybody and, and get there. I do think this school will be probably resolved shortly when parking is available again. But, um, yeah, just give us a call, and I'm sorry, that shouldn't happen. Uh, we, we want to make sure we work with our residents, so thank you.
Seeing as no further individuals are coming up, we will close the public comments section and move on to our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions and finance actions and a license and permit for the Knights of Columbus for their annual Tootsie Roll Sale. I have a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion, consent agenda is approved. We'll now move on to resolutions. First resolution is to concur with the recommendation of the city administrator and approve the road closure request from Saint Francis Cabrini Church for Wick, for Wick Road from Lawrence to Ruth with the four additional safety items for their annual festival on June seventh, eighth, and ninth, twenty twenty-four. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions?
If I may through the chair, this will be a, a request to close, for the closure of Wick Road between Lawrence Avenue and Ruth Avenue, uh, with water-filled Jersey barriers at Lawrence and Wick, and the second turnaround on Wick. Uh, the number two item will be no parking on the west side of Lawrence Avenue between Wick Road and Moore Road to allow for the two-way traffic. Snow fence down the center of the Wick Road medians to keep, uh, them from being destroyed by the foot traffic, and the presence of two Allen Park Police Officers during the Friday and Saturday evening hours of the festival. This event is still, is, uh, being coordinated by Tiffany, um, Cogswell. Uh, this is, I think, her third year doing this, so she's pretty well set on the process. Um, if we have any concerns, I know the DPS, Fire, Police have, uh, already been consulted on this. I don't think we had anything, uh, but she's very, uh, cognizant to change any issues that we have that come forth.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Resolution two is to approve the DDA's request for the road and parking lot closures for the twenty twenty-four Classic Car Show on June nineteenth, Touch a Truck on July twentieth, Maine and Michigan Festival on September twentieth, with the recommendations from the city administrator and final approval from the police chief. Motion. Motion, Mr. Marcos. Second, Ms. Nick.
I'm not going to go back through those dates again. The, uh, the main two items that the, uh, right, put in the, my recommendation for the, uh, council to consider would be, uh, secure the services of at least two Allen Park Police Officers for the Maine and Michigan Festival, and then, and then for the Maine and Michigan Festival, alcohol to only be consumed in the designated areas as determined by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission with concurrence from Chief Egan.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution has carried. Resolution to approve the amendment to FEMA for a grant and to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to bid since it's the sole provider and compatibility, and approve the fire department's purchase of equipment through the local distributor. Motion, please.
Motion, Eric.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd. Second by-
Valerius.
Mr. Valerius.
Excuse me.
Chief O'Reilly.
Good evening. Uh, again, I'm here tonight, uh, to ask you to waive the, excuse me, bid process for the amendment to the FEMA grant that we received back in two thousand twenty-two. The amendment was approved by FEMA to purchase additional, uh, equipment. We had leftover money due to a competitive bid process on the initial purchases. Um, the equipment that we're getting, um, or would like to get is through McQueen. They are the sole provider for this equipment, um, that we need and have asked for.
And if you could just tell, the, the specific equipment is the-
Excuse me. The equipment that we're looking to purchase are two, uh, emergency, they're called RIT packs. Uh, these are air packs that are designed to take in an emergency situation for firefighters or for personnel or, or victims in a house fire. Um, they're designed to be dragged. Um, they don't have all the straps and all the harnesses that are packs that we wear on our backs. They also contain a larger bottle, so we currently use a forty-five minute bottle. Um, these bottles will last sixty minutes. So if a firefighter falls through a floor or is trapped by, um, um, a, uh, collapse of a roof, um, we can take this pack in. It comes with a pack, a, a, a brand-new mask, and a sixty-minute bottle. We can also use it for a victim. And then the other equipment is for extrication, uh, some specialized equipment for extrication for stabilizing cars and, uh, larger vehicles.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution four is to authorize the city administrator to enter into a professional services contract for the feasibility study proposal for the Allen Park Fire Station renovation and addition that includes a preliminary design phase at thirty-two thousand five hundred and a design development phase at seventy-three thousand three hundred to JSV Construction Company and the SADAC Group for a cost of one hundred and five thousand eight hundred dollars, with funds coming from account four zero one triple zero nine eighty-five four fifty. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Dueling, uh, Mr. Barr and Mr. Flack, is that correct?
Correct. If I may through the chair, uh, I hate to read it, but I'm just going to go ahead and go through it as best I can here. The Minnesota Facilities Committee, um, met back at the end of February to discuss the conditions of the fire station. Um, over the last few years, the fire administration, the firefighters, they've done a fantastic job of trying to make that facility look as best as it can from the outside, um, and make it look as best as it can on the inside, um, as well. The problem that we have now is, uh, there's lack of, a lack of adequate female facilities. We do have a female firefighter and possibly another one coming onboard shortly, and, uh, they also lack, uh, help with their operational, um, efficiencies. While we agree that something definitely probably needs to be done over there, we just need to know what it's going to look like and what it's going to cost so we can figure out how to move forth with the, uh, to pay for it. Uh, we reached out to JSVig. Uh, Joe was here earlier, and, uh, he's with JSVig Construction Company to get a preliminary idea of what can be done over there. And, uh, he walked through, uh, with us, let me go back to his background too, is he was the general contractor for this facility, for City Hall Police Department. He was the, uh, general contractor for the DPS facility over on our drive. Uh, back in the mid nineties, early nineties, he was the general contractor for the court building next door. And back in nineteen sixty-nine, the company, uh, that his father formed was the contractor for the existing fire station as we have fifty years, fifty-two years later. Um, or actually, I'm sorry, it was nineteen sixty-nine, so what are we at, fifty, fifty-five years almost? So, um, so they definitely have some familiarity with us and with the operations that we have here. He brought onboard Stacy Peterson from the SADAC Group to take a look as well. Um, Stacy has done over fifty fire stations throughout his career and has a lot of experience working with, uh, with the fire departments over in that time as well as working with JSVig. I think Joe told us tonight, he did, and, uh, they've worked together on about a half dozen or so projects over the last, uh, number of years. To get the best information, we need to determine the project cost. The, this will be a feasibility study, uh, will include a preliminary design phase and a design development phase. Uh, the preliminary design phase will take eight weeks, cost thirty-two thousand five hundred hours. The design development phase will take also an additional eight weeks and cost seventy-three thousand three hundred hours. And that is going to be funded at one oh, uh, that four oh one account is a ARPA funds, American Rescue Act funds that the city received. Uh, so it's my recommendation, uh, and the, and the recommendation of the administrative staff for the city to enter into a professional services contract with JSVig and SADAC Group for a feasibility, feasibility study for the proposal, uh, feasibility study proposal for the fire department renovation in addition.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution five is to approve the Metro Act renewal request from Ford Motor Company. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd.
This is required by the, uh, through the state, the, uh, Telecommunication Act changed the, how the communities could, um, permit and charge, uh, the, uh, the communication companies for, uh, utilizing the right-of-ways within the city, and this is just part of that process. Um, this is, it looks like to be a renewal for Ford Motor Company for, uh, fiber optic systems they have that's in the, uh, Fairlane, um, complex over off of, uh, north of Oakwood Boulevard, uh, that connects their world headquarters, their roots plant to their, um, engineering facilities over on Oakwood Boulevard, Big Green Village.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution six is to approve Dura Edge to renovate the warning tracks on Diamonds Number Two and Number Three at Champagne Park at a cost of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, with five thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars from the Wayne County Parks Village and eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five from account one zero one seven five one seven eighty-three triple zero. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by-
Second.
Mr.-
Valerius.
Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions? Anyone from Parks and Recreation want to comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as we came to you a few months ago, uh, for Champagne Park, two and three baseball fields to get redone, um, there was some extra money that was left over from Wayne County, and I reached out to Dura Edge and said, "What would the cost of the warning tracks be?" Because that was not included, and they're in very rough shape, and they flood every time it rains. So they came out quickly, gave me a quote, and we reached out to, um, Alicia Bradford and, from Wayne County, and she said, "If the project's at the same place, the rest of the money from the balance of your upcoming project can be used there." So we, real simple, let's get it done.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution to, um, prove the, uh, to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to bid since sole provider and approve the purchase of one John Deere twelve-hundred A Field rake through Sourcewell Distributor, Revel's Turf and Tractor LLC, in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mark-
Second.
Marcos. Second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Carr, you're up again.
Okay, so this piece of equipment here, um, to give a little background on it, is something that we should have had a long time ago. We've never really had the adequate equipment to take care of baseball fields, and I used them when I worked at U of M in Arbor. I have them at all the Little League parks I take care of currently today. Um, this piece of equipment is a lifesaver. Um, and talking to the president of the Little League, and I asked him where we purchased these equipment, how much they cost. I did the research. Revel Turf and Sport is the best and sole supplier of John Deere. That's the brand that Little League uses. Um, and they honor the Sourcewell relationship the city has, so we got a major discount on this item. Um, and I actually today talked to the person from Dura Edge talking about the fields, and he said, "Hopefully they approve this. This will be a lifesaver to keep all these fields we've redone in the last five years up to top-notch shape. This will allow us to do so." And it's a pretty quick turnaround pending your approval tonight. They said two weeks we'll have it at our door, coincidentally enough, in time for baseball season, so pending your approval, this would be a huge upgrade to the fleet.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution eight is to concur with the recommendation of the Festivities Commission and approve the expenditure for the renovations to the Ball Diamonds at Champagne Park from Savon Cement, the current contractor, and BSN Sports for a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick, seconded by-
Second.
Mr. Marcos. I should, uh, start working on becoming a chorus. Who would like to speak to this?
I'll go through, I'll go ahead. Uh, so this was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commissioner, um, commissioned early, uh, middle last week, and being, being brought forth, uh, just for your final approval, um, as they do have the funds for this expenditure. Uh, this is a continuation of that same project that, uh, W Director Carr was just talking about at Diamonds Two and Three. This will be for the, uh, concrete, the ball, the, uh, dugouts for those diamonds and do some additional work, um, to make them, uh, top-notch as they've, uh, worked, uh, so diligently to do with the grant from Wayne County.
Any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Resolution to concur with the recommendation of the Festivities Commission and approve the expenditure for three sets of the FireCom wired headset system from Synergy Products at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd.
I, I looked for a picture of this, and I was gonna put it in there. This is a pretty cool-looking headset that actually allows for really good communication amongst the firefighters, the chief will tell you more about.
So the FireCom headset is a, it's a headset that has hearing protection built into it, and also has communications inside the truck to all the members who are wearing the headsets, and then also the dispatch so that we can talk and hear what they're saying. The reason that we are in need of this is a high priority item for our firefighters' hearing. The car manufacturers continue to make our cars wonderful and continue to make them tight and as quiet as possible while also installing really good radio systems for enjoyment. And what that does is it causes our sirens to have to get louder on the trucks to get your attention. So as we continue to respond and have louder sirens, now we're mounting dual sirens and thumpers to try to get bass at lower levels to catch your attention, that's causing higher amounts of hearing, hearing loss. It also interferes with our communications while we're talking to each other, trying to get information on scene size up, and then also through dispatch, as those sirens are going off, we're having a hard time hearing our radio systems. So a headset system that is wired is a priority item for the department. Any questions?
You're only getting three sets of them?
We're getting three sets of four.
Okay.
So it'll, they will cover all, our two engines and our ladder truck, all four seated positions.
Any further questions?
Do you know when they would be coming in?
They are in stock. Synergy is the company that will be installing the product. They are busy right now, so I would say probably in the next ninety days it'd be complete. But Synergy is a company that we use for all our sirens and our lights for police and fire trucks, so they do a good job.
Does Synergy come to the station?
Yes, they will come to the station, depending on how, it's complex because they have to run the wires throughout the cab underneath all the padding and molding. They may have to come multiple days, but that was all built into the price.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the Festivities Commission. Resolution ten is to approve the contract with MDOT for project number twenty-four A zero two four zero, parts one and two, for the local bridge replacement and rehabilitation. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, supported by Mr. Schleck. Mr. Murray.
Good evening. This is for the contract of rehabilitation of Reek Road Bridge and M Thirty-Nine Bridge that the city's required to keep up. These are the grants that about two years ago we put in for, and now they're at the point of having a contract that we need the mayor and the clerk to sign. We have to have a resolution stating so, so we can move forward. We're gonna get about one point three eight million dollars in grant work for these, and we're gonna co-pay about three hundred and eighty thousand of our money towards those. It's more of a formality at this point.
Been in the works for a while.
I'm sorry?
It's been in the works for a while.
About two years, yeah, as we finally at this stage.
When are we gonna start construction on it?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
No, they're, they're putting, after this is signed, after I turn in it, after the resolution is done, later next week, the state will sign their portion, we'll get it back, and at that point, they will put it out to bid for these two bridges. It will be done sometime this construction year. That is what they call letting the money, meaning the money's available to be paid out. That's about as much as I know until they get a contractor who bid it, winning bid, and then they turn around and tell us their start dates.
But the state's in charge of bidding process?
The state isn't, just like county on some of its projects that we co-pay. I'll, I'll give an example, Pelham will be done this year, we co-pay a certain small percentage towards that, they do all the work, we sign that we're satisfied with it. That's the portion.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. We'll now come to council comments, and this evening we will start with Ms. Nick.
Good evening, everyone. I also wanted to give a shout-out to the competitive cheer team from Allen Park. I was there last night when they, at the school board meeting, and so all those girls, they were so excited. Actually, in the past five years, they've won four times, so congratulations to them. Jackie, I'm so glad that you are on the historical. On Sundays, we've been working together, and you, you hustle. You run those boxes up those steps, and Tom, you know, you've been doing a great job too, so it's a very nice welcome to have you on the commission. Thank you. And then Katie Rogers, I know Officer Katie Rogers, I've known her since she was really young. She did theater, and she was a nice little actress, so I know she's gonna do well, she's gonna exceed as a female leader, so congratulations to her. Something that I've been getting a lot of calls about from residents is we have a group of young boys, and they are riding their bikes up and down park and on Quandt. So I have talked to the police chief, and what he has recommended is that if you, if you are going down one of those streets and they do encircle your car, do not drive through them, like a couple residents have, you know, beeping their horn and trying, stop your car. If you can get to the side, do that, and then just call the police, and they will come right away. So they can impound their bikes, but that's about all they can do, and then they would have to pay to get them out, they have to talk to their parents, there's a form you fill out that goes to Wayne County. I know a lot of parents, I mean, a lot of residents are getting frustrated with that, but please, you know, don't try to drive through them, just stop your car and just call the police. So what I'm gonna say next, I don't take any joy in saying this, but to Ms. Kittle, I understand your frustration. I'm new on council, I've only been here four months. I ask a lot of questions, I've lived in Allen Park my entire life, I care very deeply about the city. Back in January, I asked for a simple document, I did not receive it, it took me two months to get it. I received a phone call asking me why I wanted it, and then I received a phone call telling me to FOIA it. So last Friday, I came in with a FOIA. I did not end up turning it in because I got an emergency phone call and had to leave. The next day, I did get it. So what, I'm gonna suggest this, what I have done is then decided to go to each department head and talk to them, and they have been remarkable. I haven't got to everybody yet, but I do have to say the chief of police, Chief O'Reilly, Matt Baker, Ralph Fulton, those are the ones I've talked to, they've taken their time, they've explained everything to me, they've answered all of my questions, and believe me, I have many, because I am new and I do care about this city. I know what, we have four fellow, or I, four fellow councilmen that have been on for four years. I know I've talked to Jerry quite a bit, because we are new, we are trying to find our way, so you might wanna just talk to some department heads if you have questions because they are full of information, and I really have a lot of faith in them after talking with them. So that's all I have. San Patrick's Day, so everybody be careful on San Patrick's Day, I know there's a lot of police out during that time, a lot of people go to the Mars and have green beer, but so everybody be careful and, and stay safe. Thank you.
Mr. Valerius.
I'll try and keep mine short, I just wanted to thank Ms. Lozarsky and Mrs. Templin as well for taking the time to volunteer to, to help out in those capacities with the various commissions and as a board trustee. Also wanted to congratulate Mr. Minor on his retirement from the DPS. I heard Dennis say, well, I didn't even know he retired, and it kind of came as a, kind of a shock as well, but sometimes, you know, those people that work the hardest just kinda like walking off into the sunset, so maybe that's a, that's a good thing for him. I wanted to give kudos to the Parks and Rec Department, I attended the game at, at the ICE Arena, and just like it's been repeated, and at the Parks and Rec meeting that I attended as well, just the talk that you heard from the people in attendance, and none of them, you know, but I, I might say none of them, but a lot of them were not Allen Parkers who just were coming to view the game between you and Dee and Trenton, and just a lot of positive remarks about the overall look of the ICE Arena, just saying that it was remarkable that it looked like a, a brand-new arena, and even comments saying it's one of the nicest arenas they've been in, so kudos to that. Again, I think it goes a long way in regards to the work and efforts and the upgrades in the mere fact that they hosted that Division Two hockey tournament quarterfinals. I think you'll see that happen again and again, just based on, you know, the reaction and just the way it was held and the hard work and efforts of the Parks and Rec to put it on, so just wanted to go with that. You know, I, I know there were some questions about this, the Wayne County grant for the movie theater, and I don't know, Mark, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think any cities that applied for that grant have received any information, just like we haven't. So, you know, it's, it's something we'd love to hear one way or another, but, you know, we're just kinda in the process of waiting, just like anyone else. I, I, you know, I don't think anyone's just sitting back saying, well, we're not sending any more emails, we'll wait for them to get in touch with me. I think as the mayor mentioned, she's been making repeated phone calls and emails asking about it, and she gets the same response over and over again, saying that no decision's been made. So again, we'd love to know one way or another, but again, you know, I, I know people don't like hearing an excuse, you know, it's, it's Wayne County, and we're waiting on Wayne County, but it's not really an excuse, it's, it's kind of like our reality when we're dealing with that. Hopefully, we hear something sooner than later, but I know it's been eleven months and we haven't heard anything, but then again, we are not the only city that's waiting for a response, so it's not like we're sitting doing nothing. We constantly are asking for information and we're not receiving much of anything, so. Again, I wanna thank everyone else for coming out. I also wanted to extend my congratulations to the Allen Park Jags cheer team. You know, they, they talk about dynasties, that's a true dynasty. If you win four or five state finals championships, that's pretty remarkable regardless of any sport or activity, so congratulations to them, and with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marcos.
Kind of repeating, thank you for the new commissioners, welcome, Bill Minor, I hardly knew ya. It was like your sister. But congratulations on your retirement. I also wanna thank all the department heads for allowing me to pick on equally when we have the word sessions, like I'm your personal. Chief, Chief Egan, great work on getting your staff, it looks like it's gonna come all the way around and a full staff very soon, great work in getting that put together. It's pretty amazing this day and age the way police teams are doing. And I want to, oh, I honestly think the Parks and Rec, they are remarkable in being proactive and taking care of everything. I hear nothing but good things about it on the social media, which I occasionally look at. Other than that, I wanna thank all the, the public for coming out and commenting, some of the people who come to meetings, thank you. We'd like more to come, we'd like everybody to come, it's okay. If you don't come, please watch it on the, on the cable, TV, website, wherever. And as a final thing, today is National Girl Scouts Day, it was founded this day in nineteen twelve, and it's also Plants and Flower Day, so it's a perfect day for it. Thank you all for coming, greatly appreciate it, thank you goodnight.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
I'm gonna be basically saying the exact same thing that my prior three friends here have said. I'm, I wanna say thank you to everybody that has come up here. Again, all the items are being looked into and are being noted. Congratulations to all the, to the new commissioners. In addition to that, since the last council meeting, I've been on the Facilities Committee meeting and another DUA or Downriver Utility Wastewater meeting. If you have any questions, come on up and ask me. Other than that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out by saying thank you for everyone that came up tonight to spoke, and I also thank the firefighters that were there. Thank you for all your efforts that you do, not only for that particular incident, but any incident, and also the policemen and all city employees in general. And then I'm gonna put my rubber stamp on also thanking the, congratulating the competitive cheer, that's just, that's beyond impressive. But I also wanna give special thanks to all the poll workers that worked the presidential primary, that gave their efforts for that. I don't know who voted, who didn't vote, went out for that one, but that, that was a big trial, as our clerk will tell you, and to the new laws. I also wanna give special thanks to all the women of Allen Park, as mothers and role models, as March was recently declared as Women's Month, so I wanna thank Mayor McLeod and Nancy, Council, Mayor Proton, Nancy Nick. And I definitely want everyone to make a special note, a special event with the Beautification Commission that's gonna have their special fourth, on Fourth Thirteen, Good Neighbor Saturday, so come out to that. It's an event that started at the high school, that's going to be at the high school, so definitely come out and help beautify the community, and I also wanna give a special thanks also to the Festivities Commission that have done so much and give these wonderful grants that were much needed for departments, and the Historical Department with L'Prota running that, I think it's been good hands, I think they have unloaded, I've helped unload one full cargo container, working more through it and slowly organizing things, and it's a long process, but I really like where it's going, and so with that, I also wanted to say congratulations to our newest and the daughter of Tom that also serves on the historical cell. Thank you, Jack Lozarsky for joining, and Tom, and I presume Ms. Lozarsky's. So I wanna thank all of you and for all that. If you are gonna go out to celebrate or the High Holiday, as my wife calls it, be safe, be responsible, don't drink and drive, take Uber, take a Lyft, it's safer to save lives and, but definitely go out and have fun. I mean, I have fun, that's where, can't probably tell, but I'm wearing my reindeer shirt and my little happy leprechauns and tri-colored flag, so with that, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
So first again, to the people that, that came up, Mr. Leland Tholl, I, I understand your frustration, I, I work at the school. I know that it's not the answer that you wanted to hear, but I think that Mr., Chief, excuse me, Chief Egan's advice of, of dialing nine on that prompter, I'm sorry, I believe it was seven, seven, and getting directly to the officer in charge, hopefully that will get you some more prompt reaction to it. I, I think that it's important just to, to keep calling. Hopefully, we are wrapping up some of that construction project at the high school, so we will be able to alleviate that problem, and it's not permanent, and I'm, I'm very sorry for the inconvenience that's caused you. I'm, I'm so sorry, sir, but I missed your name. I'm a former, a former Councilman Levens addressed this, but I think I just wanted to mention it. Speed bumps is something that's, it gets brought up a lot, and they, they are effective in some places, but the thing, the problem that we see is, is that they cause a lot of damage to city vehicles, snowplows, being able to clear, clear the snow, things like that presents those issues. Again, the, the best thing to do in those situations is, is to make sure that you're reporting it, calling the, the police station, letting them know that you have this, if you, if you see plates, taking it down, make sure you're reporting it so that the police can, can do their job. I, I'm, I'm so sorry, I would love to come and talk to you after the council meeting, it's not, but this is not really a, a Q and A session, I, I'm, I'm so sorry, but I'll, I'll definitely come and speak to you after, after council. Thank you, sir. And thank you to, to Chief Egan. I really do appreciate all the efforts they made, like, when I saw him come up here, I thought that he was gonna tell me, you know, Chris Egan, you know, street name, he's gonna give us a complaint as a citizen, but I was, I was really pleased to hear that he had some answers for you. Again, we have a great police department, very responsive, so they, they do the best that they can with what they have, so just, just have to keep reporting, keep calling. So to the Dollar Show property, I think that everybody up here shares, shares the frustration of the citizens. I will say, we've already, we, the Municipal Complexes Committee, we, we talked about this in our last meeting. talked about this in our last meeting, and it's something that we are gonna be meeting on at the first meeting in April. I, I think that whether or not, whatever happens with, with Wayne County, that piece of, that piece of property, that, that, that land is going to be a vital and a key aspect of this city. Now, it, it might not be the, the beautiful band shell and, you know, the facility that, that maybe we wanted. But either way, I think that our department heads are already talking about ways in this upcoming summer that we're gonna make use of that space and be able to show the citizens of Allen Park that that is going to be something that is going to be vital to the future of connecting that downtown area. Something that's been mentioned with that space over and over again is that we have, our downtown is really funky. It's that triangle. So Allen and Park. And that Dollar Show prevents, provides that, that connection between those two spaces. We have a lot of opportunities with our concerts and, and the park, which we've been, right now, been currently doing in like a parking lot. It'd be much better to bring out the Showmobil and be able to set that up on a nice grassy lawn. So I understand the frustrations. We are going to meet and we are going to do what we can. We're gonna, we're gonna proceed as if we're not gonna hear from county. And, you know, maybe, maybe one day we will and we'll be execute on these plans. But we're gonna proceed as if what we can do as a city to make that a, a beautiful spot where the residents of Allen Park can go and meet and gather and enjoy the connective aspects of the city that we all enjoy. That is something that I promise you, we will move further on. I just wanted to mention to Josh real quickly, so much appreciate seeing one of my students come up here to public comments. Busing is a city of Allen Park issue. I'm sorry. It's a school district issue. So definitely, it's something, next time you see Mr. Darga in the hallways, definitely shout him down. All right? Okay? All right, he's, you got his ear. If you see him going down there, just yell real loud. He'll listen to you. All right? And I'll be sure that in my own conversations with him, I'll, I'll pass that along to him as well, because I think it's a, a genuine, a genuine issue. Again, also advancing my congratulations to the cheer team. It is amazing thing. I see how hard those girls work and, and they really do deserve it. I, allow me to be a little bit selfish here, because as the wrestling coach, we went out and we had a, we brought eight wrestlers to the state meet at Ford Field. And four of those wrestlers received all state honors. Adeline Tuccini, Melissa Campbell, Jay Clark, and Mr. Santana Ramon, who was present with us this evening. All right? So very, very proud of them. And then also, we had Cole Paquette just this last weekend. He took seventh in the fifty meter free, fifty meter free, which is again, like incredibly impressive to do. And then our own, you guys will recognize his name, Abigail Russell, she just went out to the Nike National Championship and she won a national championship in shot put and the weighted throw, which is the, basically the precursor to the hammer throw, which she will be doing at the University of Michigan next spring. So it's been a very, very exciting time for Allen Park athletics. Lot of, a lot of kids doing amazing things and it's, it's, it's been really fun to watch. Last note I'm gonna say is I'm gonna ask for some preemptive grace. Our next meeting falls on spring break for us and I have the opportunity to go with my sister's family and my mom and we're getting ourselves a place down in St. Augustine and be able to have a, a family vacation together. So I will be asked to be excused for next council meeting. But, but it, it is, we're gonna be hopefully making some, some, some great family memories down, down with my family. So with that, thank you everybody for coming out tonight and I yield.
Thank you, Dan. I think we're gonna have to vote on that.
Okay. I'll zoom in.
I'll get to Mr. Mr. Asheimer. Mr. Asheimer wanted me to wish everyone a very happy St. Patrick's Day and us, and have a safe spring break. He had to go to the airport to pick up family, so his absence. Mr. Mizzi.
It's all been said. Thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you. I'll make this brief. Again, very proud of the cheer team. And I know that we have someone sitting in the audience who's especially proud because he's the dad of one of the cheerleaders. And I understand it was quite an exciting time. I know that they won three in a row, which we honored them with here. And then they, they've come in second, I think, every other year. So this is wonderful for them to be back on top. We've got some neat things going on in our school systems. I had the opportunity to attend a presentation at the Wayne State Law School called We the Students. And formerly, that was open to only high school students and they've now opened it up to elementary and middle school. And there were seven fourth graders from Benny Elementary who did a presentation related to the writing of the Constitution. And I have to tell you, I don't think that in fourth grade I could have done as well as, as these youngsters did. And everyone in that audience learned a lot and it was very impressive just to see these young students and to hear them and to see the education that they're receiving. If I could go back, I'd like to do it all over again because they never did that type of thing when I was in school. They're, they are preparing our youngsters to be responsible citizens for the future. I think all the rest of the accolades have been said. I'm not gonna repeat it. We continue to move forward, making great strides in improving the infrastructure of our city and meeting the needs of our various departments. And with that, I will ask for adjournment. Motion by Mr. Lloyd, supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at seven eighteen.